Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, October 12th, 2009. This evening's city council is meeting in special session. I do have one quick announcement that I'd like to make, and that is that this coming Saturday, starting at 10:00 a.m., the Government Channel will be broadcasting and web-streaming the Homecoming Parade, coming live from Washington and Court Street. Some of the new upgrades that we've made to our system recently that council paid for is allowing us to do this. So, 10:00 a.m., Saturday, you will be able to watch the Homecoming Parade live. We do have a quorum with six of seven members present. On to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 11309 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 9309, authorizing the purchase of a new salt truck for the Public Works Department. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move approval of 11309. Second? Thank you. As you'll remember, we had an ord-- this ordinance was passed earlier in the year, the 09309, which this amendment references, and this was to allow for the purchase of a new salt truck. And we do need this because our old one has-- the blade has fallen apart from the frame. And what happened was that an earlier 2007 price was quoted to us for the salt truck, so we are correct-- amending this amendment to have the correct amount available for the purchase of the truck.
Motion and second. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11709 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 7209, declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Again, member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of 07209.
Second?
This is, once again, to amend an ordinance passed earlier this year, which was to dispose--
If I could interrupt. You moved for approval of 11709. I believe you made it.
Oh, yes. Correct.
Yes.
And what this new 11709 does is amend an ordinance that was passed earlier this year to dispose of certain vehicles that the city owns. It was realized that one of the Crown Victorias owned by the city is actually in worse shape, and so what we were doing is replacing the vehicle numbers on the-- for the one Crown Victoria, for the other one, so that our records will be proper for the city on disposed vehicles.
Very good. Further discussion. All those in favor of adoption of 11709?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11809 is an ordinance approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board with respect to the objections concerning the estimated assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the Carpenter Street project. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 11809.
Second?
If you recall, this ordinance is one of three that deals with this acceptance of the equalization board's report, and so this was-- the board met to consider objections with regards to the cost of the replacement of sidewalks in the Carpenter Street area, and their recommendation in Section 2 of this ordinance is to expend $1,200 or refund $1,200 to one resident in that area. This is the first of three ordinances. Do you need this?
Is there further discussion on ordinance 118? Mayor Wile.
Again, this is part of the process to do assessments, and as you've gone through it already, in terms of, you know, the necessity of need, the assessment process, and then the equalization board that had to be pointed. You can see it's quite a chore to get just sidewalks repaired on our own dollar and get reimbursed for it. I mean, we could always do it ourselves and then just eat the cost as well, but this is the process that's in the ORC, and we can do it this way.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 118?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11909 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and for energy efficiency improvements. Member Gosme.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 11909.
Second?
This ordinance is-- will allow the city to move forward with efforts to increase energy efficiency on city-owned property. The mayor's office has been working on this for several months, and this is the first step council has to get involved in to get this process moving. It will allow them to advertise for different companies to make proposals for the city that we will then be able to look at and select a provider, assuming that it goes through.
Further discussion. Again, Mayor Wile.
Okay. The next process, of course, this is an RFP, a request for proposals, to put it out. We'll probably have a smattering of energy companies coming in front of us and looking at our infrastructure to put that bid together. Then, at that point, we have a choice of pick and choosing what things we want to-- what energy efficiency steps we want to take and mix and match, depending on what kind of capital outlay is required, as well as what kind of return we'll get.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Now, under ordinance 12009, it's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a solar power purchase agreement, SPPA, and a solar licensed agreement, SLA, for a photovoltaic solar energy installation to be sited at the Athens Community Center and declaring an emergency. Member Gosme.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this ordinance is for-- this ordinance is for a stimulus funding--
Move adoption.
Sorry. Move adoption of ordinance 12009.
Motion and second.
Thanks. Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself there.
Many do.
This is for some stimulus money that's been made available in Ohio for renewable energy projects. There has been an application put in by Solar Vision, which is a third party that the city has been talking with, and assuming that that's funded and that they would be able to save us money on our power while using renewable energy at the community center, the mayor would be able to enter into an agreement with them for a long-term purchase of that power.
Further comments? Member Bain.
Alahu, is this the last time we'll have any vote on this whatsoever, or will there be some other components of this that we will be dealing with? The land, for example, or anything like that? As you understand--
As I understand, this would allow the mayor to enter into both the land agreement and the power purchase agreement, so we would not necessarily see another-- see anything else before now.
No, we really can't place more.
Could you-- you mean, not necessarily meet-- is kind of bushy-washy, considering the situation. Thirty years is a long time. I just wondered if you could be more emphatic. I mean, it just seems like it's kind of weasel language, and I'd like--
Okay. I don't mean to come across that way. This gives the mayor authority to enter into both of those agreements, for both the land and for the city to purchase the electricity, assuming that it saves us money and that the grant is received by this third party.
Member Sands.
I just wanted to touch upon something that member Bain mentioned. This is a-- would be for a 30-year agreement, and I am still reluctant to enter into disagreement for that length of time with a third-party installation on our property, and I'm just concerned that this would be an outdated installation before the lifespan was over.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I just want to voice my support for this effort because I think it puts us in the forefront of the technological advances, and we have the support of Rec Advisory Board and--
Can you come up?
--the Arts Parks and Rec Director, Rich Campitelli, has also acknowledged that it would benefit the whole site and put our community center in the forefront. So, just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Yes, Chris.
A question about number one. I would imagine the contract might contain the possibility of upgrading equipment during that 30-year time. That might be something that we could request. I know we can't absolutely demand it, but that might be a possibility. The other thing, I agree with councilmember Butler and Gosme, that I think it's critical for us to be thinking about ways in which we can save energy, and it just seems to be a good option. And the third comment would be is that it allows the mayor to enter into a contract, and that, from having watched Mayor Wile through the years on city council, I know that he asks a lot of questions, and, you know, it's not 100% given that he would proceed with a contract unless he found that the terms were reasonable, and I can't imagine that he wouldn't also consult with us to keep us informed about that process.
Member Paul.
I also would like to voice my support for this particular ordinance. I think that going forward with stimulus money is a good idea if we do receive it. It also should be noted, the economic development potential of this. We are one of the communities that can be out in the forefront, along with the other solar initiatives that we have taken. It would benefit the county and the city directly because we do have some of the largest solar installers within our immediate area, and I think that this is great because this would also act as a demonstration project for the company that does do it. So, I think it has a lot of environmental benefits, economic benefits, and economic development benefits associated with it.
Member Bain.
I would want anyone to think that my vote on this is in any way a vote against solar. It's more a vote against the-- my cranky vote against the location. I think taking a large area like this and parceling it out the way this proposal does over 30 years, out there, those solar things are a problem. Point of information, I did ask Alahu this afternoon if he had gotten the letter from the rec director concerning his wish that they be made taller, and he assured me that he did. So, just want to make sure that's in the record because apparently they were too short, which is one of, I guess, one of the problems with doing things in kind of a hurry, but I guess he did figure out that he wanted them a bit higher.
Okay.
You've got that email, I assume?
I don't--
Nope. Okay. Never mind. You're not among the elect. That's all. All right.
Further in? Yes. Member Kudun.
I'm assuming that any contract that the mayor enters into will be approved by our legal counsel by--
Alahu, members of council all got a copy of the draft contract on that, I assume?
I believe so. Some time ago.
Solar Vision 11309.
I believe that--
Were you finished?
Okay.
Are there other comments? Mayor Wile.
I can come back at you with, as it gels out, we're kind of contingent upon them getting an award of stimulus money, one and a half million dollars. I assume if we're just trying to design a carport area, it has to be tall enough so cars can actually get underneath it. I think that I believe I had this exchange of emails with some of you about tying this area up for 30 years. I don't anticipate us not using cars in another 30 years, and if we do, then it's a whole different ballgame at that point. I think if we can collapse the cars down to wallet size, then it shouldn't be a problem, but we'll always need a parking space, a parking lot. There are no trees on our parking lot. I look at this carport as an energy saving in terms of just the shelter that we provide. If in time it becomes passe to have solar photovoltaics in some, you know, obvious place, we could probably sometime after that move it on our future pool site, wherever that is, and provide shade for the pool, to our future wastewater treatment plant, wherever that should reside. So, I think this would-- could be moved in the future if you don't think-- if you think 30 years out is just too nebulous on what can happen. Again, their guarantee is it'd be 15% below the going rate of electricity. We can anticipate electricity costs rising over time, so we're always getting a discount on that. I think the dialogue when that Solar Vision was here, can they would, they'd be willing to upgrade to better technology? They actually said they would not. So, just so you're both sides of the argument right here, if my memory is correct. But it's in-- again, I look at the effort here is we'll reduce the energy footprint, we'll shade the parking lot, since we don't have trees on except for a couple light poles. I don't anticipate us using it for anything else except parking for a long time, unless, of course, some kind of changes occur with where we can provide parking, which would mean either acquisition of property, a total revamp of what our recreation footprint is on the community center is. There are changes that can occur there. It all takes one good flood, and we're in a, you know, 1% flood, and we're in a new ballpark there. I don't see it as a downside right now. I am concerned about the 30 years as well, but I'll look at it, and I'll get back to you before I sign it.
Is there other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12009?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
5-2 is how I read it.
5-2.
5-2, which allows it to pass. There is an emergency clause. Five votes allows a passage. On to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 11409, an ordinance authorizing design and construction of a school travel plan. Ordinance 12309, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract to provide maintenance and support for the city's telephone and computer networking Ordinance 12509 is an ordinance authorizing the adoption of a three-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2403, and Ohio Council 8, AFL-CIO, concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. And ordinance 12609 is an ordinance authorizing the adoption of a three-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2403-2, and Ohio Council 8, AFL-CIO, concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 12609 is the last ordinance on our agenda, and the next item is adjournment. We are now moving on to a series of three committee meetings, the first one being the Planning and Development Committee. Our member chair, Christine Falk.
Thank you. My first order of business is putting before the city council the changes that have been proposed in the Madison Heights PUD. This, as you remember, is over by the flower shop, and it's an infill project that has been proposed with condominium, a small condominium development. The developer has come forward to the Planning Commission with some planned development, the PUD changes. The Planning Commission voted unanimously on Wednesday to approve the latest modifications to this. They did approve it with a variance because it's two-- it's less than two acres, which is a normal variance there with the PUD when it's less than two acres. And they put two conditions upon that approval. The first condition is an easement for future extension of the infrastructure that they would like to have the easement lines that the developer will give to line up better with the property lines and such, and that onsite storm drainage and road access plans are submitted and approved by the Public Works Department. And that was more of formal-- they've talked about it, and they've discussed it, that they would like some formal drainage and road access plans, which are normally put in anyway through this process. Basically, what this modification does is take the units that were separated, there were seven-- there are five units, and they're-- they were separated, single units, and they massed them together into a three-unit and a two-unit structure. This was done because it helped to facilitate the infrastructure for the site, because it is a difficult site for infrastructure access and easement. And we have the developer with us tonight to answer any questions, and I will put it on as an ordinance.
Chris, if I could make one point. In an earlier discussion that I had with the clerk of council, the-- I found it very confusing, the letter that we got from the Planning Commission. It gives-- it gave me the impression that the Planning Commission at this meeting had approved the variance, so that it was really different than what we had voted on before, and the clerk of council assured me that that was done last time. This is not a new variance to this, and I did want to make sure. Mayor Wile.
It should actually recommend it, the approval. Again, I think we put it back in there because we wanted to respond, remind ourselves that it was under the standard two-acre for a condominium development. And again, a lot of the other, you know, parts of it were already approved along the way. Some of the conditions in terms of the easement for future extension is the-- was brought up by the Andy Stone, the Public Works, or Jessica, about how it should line up a little bit better. We did not see this as a real significant change in terms of previous planning and development construction. Again, it was five-- total of seven buildings, five of them were spread out, now they're in two clumps. This is actually similar to the first version, version one, which was all in one large amount. The explanation we got at the Planning Commission was that the square footage of the houses had not changed, the occupancy had not changed, just the staggering of the positions of them.
And I guess that was the point that I was trying to make. The way I read this letter--
Yes.
I get the distinct impression that at this meeting, that a new variance was added, and I wanted to make sure that it was apparent to everybody--
That's all--
--that no new variances have been added here.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I did want to make sure that point was ruled out.
Any other questions about this? I personally think that this is-- it's a minor modification, as we discussed, as was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, and at this point, unless there is objection, I would suggest that the PUD is ready to go forward and that the plant-- the PUD will come back to the city council for its final plan approval, and at this point--
That we kind of recognize this as not a substantive change? Is that what you're saying?
Well, what I-- I want to make sure that council is aware of this change, and it was discussed that it's not very substantive of the PUD as it was originally put in, and so I would hope that there's no concern on council's part on it, but I wanted to make sure that people knew about it.
Again, partly, from my point of view, the procedure is that you are aware and acknowledge the change and modifications that have occurred. Again, if we thought they were substantive, we would advise going back to square one through the PUD process, but I think the commission didn't feel it was that different. But again, just to, you know, I want to make sure everybody's aware of what the changes are and that they are acceptable to everybody, procedure-wise.
Any more discussion? Thank you. My miscellaneous, there has been a new addition to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. Ann Rubin will join us. She lives in the near Eastside neighborhood, and so she is volunteering her time. I will probably ask for a resolution for that next week. That's all on the Planning and Development Committee.
On to the Transportation Committee. Committee Chair, Christine Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one major agenda item tonight for discussion, and we have with us several representatives from the business community. By way of background, this is for discussion of the holiday parking in the Uptown area. And I shared with councilmembers a letter that I received on August 12th from Wendy Jackmuss, the president of the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce, and she was writing on behalf of the Athens Area Uptown Business Association to have us all think ahead about the holiday season and how we might best make arrangements for parking during that time. And in this letter, Wendy's suggestion that it might be an interesting study if the City of Athens kept the street meters status quo and bagged the two-hour meters in the parking garage and utilized these for free holiday parking. And she then requests, on behalf of the Chamber and the Uptown Business Association, if that might be a possibility. When we discussed this last month at the committee meeting, councilmember Bain made a good suggestion that we have some additional discussion about it and some other information, and have input from the business owners. I have obtained information from Captain Pyle. I think one of the questions was the revenue that is generated in the parking garage, and for December of 2008, that amount was $2,900, so that's also a consideration we should take into account. And I know that there have also been some other suggestions made up when we define the term "holiday," that we might look at the period of time that's involved in that rather than stretching the entire period from Thanksgiving through the end of the year. I think that's quite a big time. So, what I'd like to do is open it up for any comments from councilmembers, and then also allow time for Josh Brennan and Wendy Jackmuss to make any comments if they would. Councilmember? Councilmember?
Thank you, Member Nysley. In general, I support the idea of offering parking during the time period of the holidays. I think I like the Court Street and other Uptown Streets bagged because it offers a visual, and then people realize that that is free parking. I think sometimes a lot of people, committee members, forget that the garage exists. I mean, obviously, it's there because it's generating $2,900 worth of revenue, but I think the visual of the bags on the Uptown Area Streets makes sense. I also would like to-- I know last year we had a late discussion about some of the business owners on Union Street expressing interest or curiosity about bagging some of those meters as well, and I want to voice support for that as well this year, that Uptown be considered beyond just Court Street, Congress. So, those are a few thoughts I have.
Probably one of your questions to Captain Pyle is the estimate of the difference between revenue from the street meters versus the garage. I--
What was that?
Additional information needed, revenue from the meters.
He did provide that. I don't have the figures in front of you. Essentially saying it would be a wash.
Really?
I would like to point out, if I may, that there-- and Josh may speak to this, too. Sometimes, or often, there is a conflict with those bagging when we have event lights. You have it bagged all the way up and down the street, then all of a sudden, on one side of the street, you have a different color bag. Nobody's looking, nobody's thinking, and that's when cars get towed for horse rides. So, there are some conflicts. I think with better advertising and outreach efforts, that the parking garage would be utilized. There was another concern, another councilmember talked about, is it going to be the entire parking garage? Are we going to wind up with--
Now, the utilization of those areas is really heavy because of the court and parking tickets and going and doing business at the city hall. Is there going to be some kind of-- I mean, if all of a sudden it's all free, is it going to be a lot more competition for it? Are we, you know? So, is it would-- it force people to go up into the higher-- I mean, maybe it will get people used to using our garage?
Well, and I'd also contend that it's underutilized, basically. It may look pretty heavy up to the second and the third.
Third floor, right.
And you get past the employees, then it's, you know, fairly vacant.
Right.
And then, of course, this will be the downtime when the students are gone.
Okay.
So, obviously, I like the idea.
Senator, any question about 24-hour parking? Since we've already talked about two, will they be allowed to park overnight? People on the eight-hour shift, you know, that are working fast food, they go park there? Would they be have to--
Oh, they-- I'm sorry.
Would they-- would we be patrolling it at night as well?
That wouldn't change. There's no overnight parking there now.
So, you're still going with the two-hour, no matter what?
Like I say, we're still formulating.
Then how can we respond to it if it isn't final? You know?
Well, it will be when we get to the ordinance, but you asked for additional discussion.
No, I know. I mean, I thought we were close to the end. I mean, not close. No, I know. I mean, I thought we were close to the end. I mean, not close. Are we close to the end? I mean, I just, I have a hard time wrapping my head. We are close to the end.
Maybe our discussion tonight will bring us closer to the end. Let's be hopeful.
Councilmember Coon.
I was just wondering, has there been a two-hour limit in the past?
In the parking garage?
On the street.
On the street is two-hour limit, regardless of whether you have money in the meter or not. It's two hours when you feed the meter. Last time during December or the holidays, we usually waived the meter charges, but it's still two hours.
It's still two hours. So that's how it's always been then?
And the difficulty that occurs is during the rides, sleigh rides or whatever you want to call it, horse rides, we change the bags out to say no parking whatsoever on the western part of Court Street from Washington down to Carpenter. And occasionally, because the shade of the, I guess we could get candy strikes, bags, but usually goes from like a white to a yellow, and at dusk it's not noticeable. And very rarely somebody parks there and gets towed or taken.
They get towed.
They get towed.
Had it free-bagged meters in the garage, and it was that way the entire time, there might be less confusion when the no parking on the streets when we're having the rides happen. There would only be that one, just no parking at all.
Now, if I understand, Nancy, are you asking whether we will have two-hour limits in a parking garage?
I didn't ask. That's someone else's.
No, I'm, okay. I thought that was.
Well, no, mine was about what happens even into the evening, because I know the meter attendants do the checking during the day, but will, will we have some 24-hour parking going on then?
In the, in the parking garage?
Yes, that's all we were talking about, right?
The custodians police the garage at that time. So I imagine that, I think the first two floors are two hours and the rest is unlimited as long as you pay.
Do they write, do they write tickets?
They write tickets.
How much?
They love writing tickets.
How much do we, I know they look for the guys who used to knock over the meters, but I don't know if they wrote tickets.
I do not know how we monitor it. Probably somewhere we would not allow overnight, so.
We do not now.
Any other comments being forward here from Mr. Brennan and Ms. Jackmas? Councilmember Butler.
Thank you again, Member Nisley. I know we briefly discussed the economics of the issue, and someone mentioned, was it a wash? Is that correct?
It was me.
And what did you, so what did that mean exactly?
I'll have to, I do not have the figures in front of me.
Okay.
But essentially, what he's indicating is what he collected, what occurred, would switch from the parking garage to the streets. $2,900 during the six-week period, thinks he'll recoup that at the streets. I think perhaps more, but that's just my opinion.
I guess I would be curious what would be preferable for patrons, whether it would be the street or the garage, and then also the economics of the issue, I guess.
So if we have citizens out there listening tonight, feel free to send your emails to Councilmember Butler.
Sure, thank you. I'll forward them to you.
kbutler@ci.athens.ohio. Yes. And I would as well welcome any kind of comments. Mr. Brennan, if you'd like to make some comments.
Hi, Josh.
Hi. This is just an issue that we've actually had some discussion about over the last couple of years. Last year was when we really got into it, and we did, I think, bring this to council last year, but we were kind of late in the game to do it. Our main reason for doing this is what we found is that unfortunately, the parking is utilized more by employees than patrons. On the North Block especially, you'll see at 8:00 and at 9:00, the spaces just fill up immediately, and they will remain full all day with a two-hour cycle of people moving their cars.
Up one and somebody else.
Right. Somebody moves up one, somebody else moves up one. In fact, we've even heard of employees that that's, they have a system. They, when December hits, they know what they're doing and they know where to move. So unfortunately, for my business in particular, I can tell you specifically, I have a few customers that right now will come in in the morning, between 8, 9 o'clock, they can find a space, they park, get something to eat, and then go on about their day. In December specifically, can't do that because there isn't any parking. It fills up so fast. So our concern with that was, it didn't seem to be working. So we said, let's try something different and maybe go to the parking garage. We also feel that it makes more of an awareness for the garage. Most of us usually in our meetings have come to the conclusion that the garage is underutilized, that, you know, unfortunately, I, the best way I can describe this is I tell, tell the story to everybody is I say to people, what'd you do this, or, you know, why don't you come uptown? Well, I can't find a place to park. What'd you do this weekend? Well, I went to Easton. Where'd you park? In the garage, you know? People here, unfortunately, kind of forget we have a parking garage. They drive around the streets. If they don't find a space, sometimes they don't, they don't stop. So we would like to make the awareness that there is a garage there. And oh, and by the way, it's free in December. You can park. Our suggestion would absolutely be to have the two-hour limit, you know, don't let people park there all day because then the garage will become the same situation as the street. The feeling is that it's a lot harder for people to walk, Ohio University employees possibly working in Chubb Hall won't walk all the way to the garage, whereas they could just walk out on the street. Again, we would just like to see the spaces reserved on the street for the customers. And I don't think our experiences have told us that the customers really don't mind putting a couple of quarters in the meter. They would just rather have the space. So that's kind of our concern with it. But again, the two-hour limit, that's was something we would absolutely, you know, like to see, so that there is a turnover. I would agree that I think you're going to see the revenue would actually be a little bit better because I would have to believe that garage is way underutilized. $2,900, I would think you'll make a lot more on the street in December than you would, you know, in the garage. Again, this is just based on customer comments that I've had over the last couple of years. You know, the parking on the street's been free for I don't know how many years in December, and we've just seen the problem kind of escalate over the years. And last year, we said, maybe, maybe we could do something different and see how it goes.
Question please, Josh. Are you a proponent of actually two-hour limits within the parking garage? Is that what you stated?
Right. On those two-hour meters, if you're going to bag the two-hour meters, that would make them free. Same bags you're using on the street, two-hour, you know, this is a free meter, but only for a two-hour limit, you know? And again, I think our feeling on that in the discussion is most people when they come uptown, two hours is enough time. If they want to go to a couple shops, they can do that. If they need more time, they may have to move their car. But it would, it's the same situation they would have if they were on the street last year. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Brennan?
Yes, Mayor Wild.
I for one would say it's a nice experiment. We should try it. Being the scientist in me, let's do an experiment. We don't like it, we can go back to the old way next year.
I do think that it's probably worthy of attention. I think that the area expanded and was on East Union so people could go to the museum shop, and then, of course, that moved and the thing continued. And so there were a lot of things that stayed in from inertia. It used to stop on the 26th of December, and I think that that's when, we should probably pull it tighter. And I don't know for sure. I guess at the end of the school, at the end of the holiday season, more of, yeah, it's been decades. I mean, you know, so everybody added their favorite assortment to it. So maybe it's time to make a radical break. But I think a couple of weeks maybe, or three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yeah. But I, you know, I may be the only one that feels that way. I just don't want it to sort of start spiral into something even more grand than it is, if that's what we're going to do.
I would hate for them not to capture that Black Friday and the effects that happened after with all the holiday money.
Is Black Friday right after Thanksgiving?
Well, there will be no competition with the university, so it shouldn't be a problem. And we will be closed, won't we? Because that's one of the holidays that travels, so it doesn't really matter, Black Friday so-called. Are they giving away microwaves uptown?
The retailers on town.
No, I know, but there's nobody to give tickets that day.
We don't have. Isn't that the word you just passed around?
Well, if anybody can figure it out, then they're obviously not trying to cage parking.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I hadn't thought of this change, but I'm impressed that the business people from the area are making the suggestion, and I would be inclined to go with their suggestion. Since the holiday change in parking is traditional, something the city has done for years, a change based on their recommendation is worth trying.
And this would be something we would include in any advertising. We do a lot of holiday advertising, and we would be sure to include that, that the parking would be in the garage.
Mention our names, all right?
I thought some very good and valid points brought up.
Thanks for the comments, everyone.
I would like to bring up some project updates, and many of these are related to grants that the city has been busy applying for, Department of Public Works, and then also the city administration, I know, has been working very hard on these grants. So I'm glad you're here, Service Safety Director Mosley, to give us additional details on this, if I have any of it wrong. Key Drive, the construction is about to begin for that, and we will be needing an appropriation of $30,000 in the street fund 220. And we will be reimbursed for this. This is, as you'll remember, when it was passed, this is, we're able to do this because of an Appalachian Regional Commission grant. So the money will be put back in at completion of the project. The Curtis Mulligan project, many of you have seen some of the construction beginning on Mulligan Road.
Oh, yeah.
With road closed signs. And you will remember also that the south side of town has also had numerous water outages. And because of a CDBG grant and a loan, we are able to make some improvements to the water line and also to some of the equipment. And if I'm understanding right, in the past, what's happened is the equipment has come back on, has hammered, that knocks the pipes that are on hillsides and that are sometimes subject to moving, the pipes then break. So we're going to be upgrading, I believe, some of the equipment and also the pipes with that project.
May I?
Yes.
On that project, is there going to be any money to redo the surface of the road? Because I know we've really cut into Mulligan and.
Unfortunately, we have to redo that revenue. We're going to try to keep it at a minimum in terms of the disturbance, but yes, we do have an overlay. I do want to clarify that it's not CDBG funds, it's OWDA, and this is.
Similous.
Yes.
Thank you for correcting that.
And that's all, because I know your county utilities, transportation.
And so we'll be needing an appropriation of $30,000 for that one, for the construction contingency. There's also an update that I have on that, and that would come from the 740 Water Fund. And the money will be returned to the fund if we do not use it.
Wouldn't they just tip right down from OWDA?
You mean over the award, you mean, zero interest money?
Well, I don't know. I mean, they can come back if they want. I just don't see tying up the money.
Well, we are still awaiting the actual forms on this loan from the OWDA. Even though we received it electronically October 1st, they have not, they haven't really mailed them yet. So this, our.
They told us they lost it. They tore up my office thinking I lost it.
We can find out, but I'd like, we did want this read tonight to possibly be an ordinance, you know, so that we don't have it if we need that.
If you need the contingency, it would be way at the end, wouldn't it? I mean, why tie up the money now? I guess I don't understand.
I can ask for further clarification on that.
Oh, I couldn't.
Before, next Monday. We'll try and get it yet this week. We will by Friday. Harold Avenue, many of you have seen the improvements going in on West Union Street and Harold. This was grant money.
Yes.
And that was to upgrade some of the sewer lines, and that's going, in part, going to alleviate ponding situation, which we've had for years near the fairground. And to improve that situation, it's also improved the intersection of Harold and West Union, where we previously had a large utility pole. And I think that's been corrected now.
It has yet to be corrected.
It's on the books for Thursday.
It is on the books. Okay. So we will see further improvements, visual improvements to that. Thank you. Richland Avenue Roundabout, you may have seen the coverage in last Thursday's Athens News, and this has been, it's a large project. And we're in the final stages of plan review for that, and that will be bid in December slash January for construction to begin then by March. And the Roundabout and itself and one part of the bridge will be completed by the time the students arrive in September 2010. And the remaining side of the bridge is to be completed by December 2010. So that's just an update on that. We will have an LPA agreement for that that will be coming before councils and ordinance next week. And then we have another Richland Avenue South project, and it's been labeled Project 244. That is correct. And this is for the area from Derry Lane, just south of Richland 682 intersection, to what some people refer to as the South Y for the entrance of Route 33 North off of Richland Avenue. And this, we will be asking for an appropriation of $11,000 for that project, step three of this. And what this will be doing is looking at traffic, the physical conditions of the roadway. It will be arranging for a technical study to be looking at things like access, shared left turn lanes, excuse me, pedestrian facilities, bike path possibilities, looking at Coats Run, also looking at the storm drains on Richland Avenue, utilities, and street lighting. And we have had some earlier grant money from the Ohio Department of Transportation for this, and this is now at the next stage in this project. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I would just voice briefly my concern on issues regarding Richland Avenue. I've had a number of community members express their fears and worries and problems, trying to transportate, move themselves bicycle-wise on Richland Avenue. And also, a father and his young daughter were cycling on the sidewalk, and since the sidewalk is crumbling in a lot of areas as well, they had some problems there. And his daughter was in a little accident because she hit a big boulder for her bike, which was a crumbling sidewalk piece. And so I think there's definitely some concerns and issues that we need to tackle on Richland Avenue.
Thank you for the comments. And I do believe this study is going to be looking at a 200-foot wide area on this. So it will be extensive. And once again, I appreciate the city's work on getting the grants and working with the Ohio Department of Transportation to move these improvements forward. Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Bain?
To clarify, that would be from 682 to Derry Lane or to that review, or to the summit, the improvement. So will they go beyond the summit?
They will go beyond the summit.
Another 200 feet?
The area being looked at is 200 feet wide. If you looked at the street as 20 feet wide and then out on either side of the street, it will go from Derry Lane.
To?
To all the way down south to the South Y. So it will, yes, go through.
Where the Palmeroy Road?
Yeah, to where Palmeroy Road.
To Palmeroy St, I mean, to the South Star.
So it will encompass that summit at Coats Run and looking at that intersection.
Okay. There's not 200 feet, is there, some places?
There, there likely is not.
I'm trying, I'm thinking 200 feet, you know, the corner down to my neighborhood.
Okay.
Are we going to have transportation, ODOT people looking at it, or are we hiring a consultant?
I believe that we are working with TEC Engineering Company based out of Mason, Ohio. And that's the firm that we're working with, but that is in conjunction with the Ohio Department of Transportation. So I'm sure they'll be helping over with oversight. Thank you very much. I think that's all of my miscellaneous ideas.
Onto the Finance and Personnel Committee, committee chair, Jim Sands.
Finance and Personnel has several miscellaneous issues to talk about, and I think Member Bain has some. I'll start out. Personnel Director Beverly Henderson recommended to me a couple of months ago, she'd like to look at a new and, in her opinion, improved third-party administrator agreement for our prescription drug plan. Currently, this would involve an administrative fee for $3.75 per employee per month that the city would pay. Currently, we pay no administrative fee, but we're paying a relatively high cost for. But we're paying a relatively high cost for drugs. This new plan suggests that we would see a significant change, a decrease in the cost of drugs in saving up to, and the plan, the people pursuing us going with the plan, say up to $25,000. That may be a lot, but if we can have a significant savings, it might be worth trying. The Personnel Director's suggestion is that we try this for one year, evaluate it at the end of the year. And she's suggesting that we would start this new agreement as of January 1st. She's run it by Patrick Lang, the law director, and he didn't see any problem with that. I have not had a chance to talk to the administration about it, whether, where they are at this point. So I'm just bringing it up. We'll discuss it further as issues come along. Any other comments? Okay. So that's a suggestion that I've just received from the Personnel Director. So we'll follow it up. And kind of in the same vein, we mentioned two weeks ago that in our utilities billing office, the current vendor is no longer servicing that department. And so we need to look for a new server. The suggestion was to go with CMI, who already works with the auditor. And we had some discussion about the possibility of payments and billing through email. And we were going to get some more information about that. I don't have any further information.
I did receive an update. I just have not forwarded that, that has email utility bills included and the hosted utility connect inquiry and payments that has an associated almost $5,000 annual subscription fee to that.
To this CMI company, if we went with him?
So I haven't had a lot of time to absorb it or even forward it to you, but I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll come back.
Put it on in two weeks. Can you tell me?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll bring it up again, as Member Bain suggests, in two weeks. And at that point, we probably should try to take some action because we're just kind of, we're just kind of going along as best we can at this point.
And it's not been that long.
Well, but any billing cycle without, without somebody overseeing it is dangerous. Member Coon?
I just had a question, whether or not we go with CMI or whomever. Well, for those of us who have our water bills automatically deducted from our checking account, will that still, will that service still be provided?
Yes, actually, we just changed, and I don't know if you've noted or not, I've gotten a couple of calls to the smart bill we went as, in terms of sending out those invoices. And I'd had a citizen or two call me and say, why am I getting a return envelope when I'm on auto pay? And what they've indicated is now it says no payment needed, there's no extra envelope included in there. So we've made that upgrade. We would stay with that same company, I'm sure they work this thing along.
Thank you.
And we also mentioned that we were working and we continue to work on a financial package for our non-union employees. I sincerely hope that in two weeks, we will have those details to talk about. Member Bain, did you have anything to add to this?
I guess what I want, would like to go back to is our third-party administrator with respect to medications or pharmaceuticals. Will we suffer, will we have a reduction if they aren't handling it, United Health?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Will they have, will we have a reduction in their administrative costs for that $10,000 trade-off? Or is that $10,000, is it still going through United Health, or what's going on there?
I believe it is.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I thought I would have, if we were going to see a concomitant savings, is all.
It's my understanding, the estimate with cost was about $7,500 annually in order to have the service. That would then hopefully result in a savings that covers, of course, the charge.
It's roughly $50 a person.
We don't have that memo, so we're...
Nor do I. I just did the arithmetic.
I think it's addressed to Jim Sands. That's probably why I got it.
The idea.
Excuse me. I'm just introducing, we'll talk more about it. Administration, did you have anything else to talk about?
In terms of finance personnel, I have two items. One is from last Thursday, actually, three items, I take it back. One item, of course, was discussed about the stimulus package for the transit, city transit. Money, again, is submitted out, we have to appropriate upfront and get reimbursed for later. Essentially, I've put together, this is the list of the items that we've been dealing with. We'll have to exclude this crippled out section for those. What you're looking at is we're trying for a bus. This would be a stimulus package bus, a bus shelter, a portable lift for mechanics. And I crossed out the count of maintenance and just kind of required we join the fund. The other second page we look at includes heavy impact rent, six bike racks, farebox, and replacement HVAC for the garage. Total is about $139. The discussion with this, discussion with this, of course, is that we get reimbursed for this money. But again, because it's stimulus package money, they want us to do it quickly. Preferably have everything out and rolling by November, I believe. We could probably pull this, I believe we're talking to take this out of tourism and reimburse in tourism, and those all came back at us. We have a bus on order right now for about, a little bit over, about $60,000. That's a 10, we have a 10% max on that, match on that, so we expect about 54 and change, less than 54 coming back at us. The bus, that bus is expected within about 30 days, since we got invoice for it. But that means we have to ask reimbursement of that. So it's a cash flow problem to even get, to go for this bus and the other equipment, which should be done by the end of the year. So I request, actually, that we pull some money out, front the purchase of these things with the idea we get it back in at the, at the end of the stimulus package. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Member Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Not to sound trite, but could you please clarify or help me understand what is...
Can I just hand it out?
No, what's a portable lift?
A portable lift is a heavy-duty lift for lifting up the buses, so they can work underneath the buses.
Okay, so this will be at the garage?
It's for the service garage, yes. It's going to have to go out to bid, because if you notice, it's fairly pricey, about $60,000.
Okay.
Right now, they don't have one. So they basically have to crawl under the bus. And the idea is this will make it easier and they can do more servicing of the bus system, for the bus system. It's kind of an interesting hodgepodge of requests. I don't know why we only asked for one bus shelter, but it seemed to have gotten in the mix that way. As I say, the bus is really, to me, is the critical part, and I know the heating system of the three heaters in these service garage, two of them are down right now. We're going to actually replace it with an old one, but since the stimulus package came through on that, we'll replace it with a new one.
And it appears that the new bus would come with a wheelchair lift as well?
They all come with wheelchair lifts, yes, they will. I think it's a little bit pricier than last time, but again, the price has gone up. I think the last one was about $57,000 total. We changed the suspension a little bit, I believe, but other than that, everything's about the same. The fare boxes, they wear out, so we need to upgrade those one more. All that change running through, I guess. Remember, we're also going to have a fare increase for the bus system in January to offset some of our capital cost and operating costs. So that's one request I have. The other one is, I think I gave it to Jim, is that it's time to renew, you guys to authorize meet for the public defender's office. We just got the invoice for that for this, this year, this half of the year. Let's see if I have it here. Basically, 05909, which was done, we authorized it from January to June 30th for a sum of $67,000. The new contract, which is kind of, they've just sent to me two days ago, I think it was, is actually for a half-year of 6168. So it's actually gone down, which is surprising, as, yes.
First.
That's a first. I guess there's, I guess crime is down, I don't know. Years out of the criminals are richer. So, but I have the, I have the contract. I can give you copies of that if you wish, for information's sake. I also have copies of the, I'll pass them along, top to bottom, of the past two ordinances that authorized entry of the contract. But I do need that authorization to re-sign the contract for the end of the year. And again, what?
The money's been appropriated.
Yes, the money has been appropriated. Actually, yeah, for the, the PO has actually been cut for this particular invoice. But again, I don't know if I can spend if I don't have authorization to get the contract to do the contract.
Member, this contract is a one-year contract, but it runs from July to July, which is the county's fiscal year. But ours is January to January. So we're always doing this half-year stuff, and it's often coming at the last minute. So this is nothing new.
Yes, they sent the invoice in the same packet with contract and said, here you go. But you had appropriated the money in, in forethought that we would have to do this, rather than have to chase the money, the money's there and the PO's cut. But again, I do need the contract to be authorized to do so.
The county actually has the same fiscal year, it's the state public defender's contract. I just wanted to...
Thank you.
And as I say, in the literature, you'll notice that the last one, 5909, had a dollar amount, and the agreement should, you should pick that up to show a reduced amount, which as I say, is usually at this point, we have a discussion how it's gone up and whether it's cheaper to buy our own lawyer, right? Isn't that how it goes?
Oh, 20 years' worth of flailing about on this one, but...
Okay.
This is what it's always come down to after many different council members have looked at the three different options that the Ohio Revolving Loan Fund allows us to do. As outrageous as this seems, it's always been determined that this is the best route to go.
And it's even better now. And the last thing is, there, I think you got some literature from ILAHU about the timetable of revolving loan fund. We approached and had discussion with renewal funding out of Oakland, California. They do this type of system. I think the conversation between ILAHU, Ron Lucas, we're having weekly meetings in terms of energy and what to do about the revolving loan fund. Most of us, we want to stay ahead of the game on this. Why, the company out there actually will for, has a à la carte system of things they would do for us. One thing would be create a legal structure for our revolving loan fund, a program framework. And that's really what we want to work on for about, they're saying between $9,000 and $13,000. I think we'd like to try this. We could do it ourselves right now, but I don't think we have the, I don't have the actually staff to do it, to tell you the truth, or the wherewithal. We could probably try contacting somebody within the state, which we discussed as well. But there, it's all new territory to anybody in Ohio. Whereas this renewable funding in California has been doing it for, in fact, they, the conversation, conference call we had with them, they seem to think that, you know, we say, we're going to try $4 million in seed money, and they say that's chump change. So I think they have expertise to at least get it rolling for us. I would request at least some money from the Athens enhancement, about $14,000 to do this. I think you got the literature from ILAHU, if I got CC on it correctly. It was under renewable funding and summary of design services for special energy improvement districts.
Yeah, so this is for the solar, municipal solar program, we've been working on for some time now. This company actually was very important in starting the very first program like this in the country out in California. And they work with that city, with Berkeley, and a few other cities that are doing these types of programs. And so really, we've reached the point where having some outside expertise is probably necessary and can prepare us for stimulus applications that probably will be coming down the pipe very, very soon.
And from the surveys and other correspondence, there's a number of residents that have indicated they're indeed interested in this one. So we feel like in order to push it forward, we need to have this next step completed.
A little more, just a couple more bits of information. I did contact Brickhead and Eckler, who have some expertise in this area. They're going to provide a quote as well, to provide these services.
Okay.
And I'm also, there's no, you know, there's no state funding that's specifically designed for this sort of thing. But I am talking with a couple of people at the state level to see if they would be willing to, to help us pay for this first stage of it. I'm not terribly optimistic that they will for this beginning program design part of it.
And part of the discussion that, when he mentions Brickhead and Eckler, they, the conversation we had with the last meeting is that we have a, we have a price quote for these guys. We should go to the Ohio guys and say, can you beat it? And so we're going, we're going to, you know, go back and forth with them there. But again, what we want is to finish products so we can say, this is how the program's going to run and be able to just plug it in. And at that point, chase the money. And it is contingent of money.
Senator Bain?
I was just wondering if we would be running the revolving loan fund through the city auditor's office, or would it be totally external? We've had housing loan funds back in the day, and we have had the station revolving loan fund and other funds. And I just wondered if the auditor's office would be the vehicle, or would it be external? Do we have any idea?
No, we've discussed a little bit of that, but we'd actually have to add on staffing if we're going to put it in Kathy's office, I believe. Right now, I think we're drifting kind of like doing it with an outside agency, but it depends on the paperwork. And a lot of it has to do with how you vet the actual, the conversation goes back and forth, how do you, how do you vet such a loan program? If we envision this as a special assessment for property owners, it's really not so much a question of their accountability, but rather their property. And then, of course, what, you know, so it's not, and whether they get sunlight is more important at that point, whether it's actually worth it for them to do that. The other conversation is if you try doing it outside, a special assessment, then it becomes, are they credit worthy? The special assessment system probably gives us less worry about whether they are credit worthy or not. And the next question after that is how to capture it, make sure they do not, the conversation goes back and forth, saying if you put a special assessment on a property, that adds to the cost of the purchase, makes it less favorable for somebody to sell the house or buy the house. But at the same time, it's counterweighted with the fact, if you have a mortgage on a house, does that improve the house worth as well? So the conversation is how do you make sure it stays with the house and gets captured in the transaction? And really, that's not something important to us if we have a special assessment on a property.
Just so we get the money back and can replenish the fund. But I'm more concerned about the reams of information. Are we going to have income eligibility in this requirements? Like, are we going to subsidize low and moderate income people? Who wouldn't normally have a chance? I mean, because in the past, many programs that were based on this sort of system would have had that. And even without that principal low and moderate income, which we've sort of drifted away from, you will have a lot of material that will be sensitive material, documents that individuals will put forward. And I guess I wondered how that would be handled. Since it's not a corporate entity, it would be a public entity, and it would be in a different realm. I know Paula may have any answer, she's looking for a piece of paper right there.
Well, I'm just, what this initial $14,000 is to have the legal structure developed, program framework, and then possibly, you know, assistance in applying for it. It's just that we feel like we can't move forward until we have additional expertise brought in to be able to even offer the program.
But in-house, out-of-house, and the cost, I mean, it's supposed to be zero cost to the city, right? Because we're in a tough, tough times, I mean, in a way that maybe some other things we do aren't zero cost. And I just want to make sure that some of the other options that have been out there are explored, you know, like Gary Sealy's operation started out as an SBA, small business loan operation. Once again, public documents, lots of stuff, and lots of work, as we know from the bus system. I would like some time to know what it really costs us.
Us, for our bus?
Yeah, you betcha. In terms of our, of our zero-sum game with personnel? In terms of our, of our zero-sum game with personnel and other things like that.
It takes-
I mean, not that I don't want it, I mean, don't automatically assume that's what I'm asking, but I think we have to be realistic on what the true cost is as opposed to this grant cost. Sometime. Doesn't have to be tomorrow.
Member Gosman?
Respect to transportation.
No, I mean, it's just, that's just one where it's mushroomed and ballooned and has grown. But this one could too, and I don't think that, you know, I want to go in this with our eyes wide open, knowing what the issues are, no short-term, we got to do it tomorrow kind of things, please.
Well, we're not trying to do it tomorrow, that's why we're putting-
I just asked that, I mean, I'm just, I'm fussing about.
Okay.
It's because I'm coughing.
Member Gosman?
Member Bain, those are really good points, and we've, in our meetings, we've been discussing those exact points, and there's not clarity on, on all of them. One of the things that this group, not what we're asking for now, but one of the things that they mentioned is designing, once you get to that point in the program, designing the program to have a portion of it for low to moderate income, help make that more attractive to those folks. So it's possibly something that could be worked into the program. The federal credits make it difficult on that issue, but it's certainly something we're looking at. And in terms of internal or external administration, that's, that we're looking at the options and, and the costs.
So some part would be, would be hyped off from the amount that comes into the program to pay the cost-
Exactly.
-as opposed to squeezing it out yet another way for us?
Exactly. It would be a direct, a direct charge on the participants to pay for the program itself.
And I think that's all I have. You have anything?
I have.
Go ahead.
Well, yes, not very bad news, but it's budget time. And I think I handed out a timeline, and we haven't really talked about it very much, but next Monday, typically in the past, if this is okay with everybody, is, at a regular meeting, is when I usually give my revenue projections for next year. So I've been operating on the assumption that I would still do that next week, if that's okay.
Please do.
Okay. And then after that, in committee meetings, I think it's up to you guys to decide what you want to talk about, and maybe let me know if you need information from my office. So I'll just plan on that then. That's okay.
Can I send out electronic through the timeline again to everybody?
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you. Keep us updated.
Number Paul?
Can you give a primer on how the budget process works? Because I think a lot of people don't understand how the process works, so that people can anticipate, and also the people, as Nancy says out on television, man, to just understand what's going to be the process and how it goes about.
It happens in December mostly.
Like right now or next Monday?
Next Monday.
A little five-minute synopsis or something.
I can do that.
Yes, Sarah Stinchcomb?
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to apologize in advance, particularly to Councilmember Bain, for not getting this information to her. So I don't mean to be stealing anybody's thunder, but we have the final report back from the Center for Municipal Solutions for the Roosevelt Tower. They've, the cover letter is attached to our structural and RF emission reports. As the report demonstrates, based on the load information we are provided, the structural, tower, guy, anchors, and base foundation is in compliance with the design standards, which is the appropriate design in the state of Ohio. In addition, the RF emissions of the nearest property line are 1% of the allowable maximum for public access, access for human exposure based on the FCC standards. In other words, based on the information we are provided, the tower is safe as it meets both RF emission and structural standards.
So can you-
I'll give that all to you.
Can you send it to the people?
Sure.
That would be-
Whoever, I have electronically-
You know the ones, you know this group of three.
So it's actually a good report.
And that was from the environmental engineer that was-
It's called, they're the Center for Municipal Solutions. They work with municipalities throughout the United States on the tower.
And they may also give you help on extracting more money from, I mean, actually not being so naive with respect to-
They would actually, they offer a service to assist us in designing our own tower regulations, and they'll do the G P, and I've been asking for that.
And they also do not charge us, they-
In that scenario, yes, they charged that. We did pay $5,000 for this study.
Yeah, we know we did.
Any comments about this particular issue?
It'd be nice to read it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all I've got.
We stand adjourned.